I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Millie. We also have with us the lead pastor from the Redeeming Life Church, Brian Capeland, and we'll ask him, yes, he'll become pastor there and he'll raise some good prayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. You guys would be one of the great for me. Kind gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful. We're blessed to live in such a community as this, that there is work to be done and that there are leaders to use that work. God, I pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment. Due to the work that is your will bless community, it would bless this community. I ask that you would bless them and guide them, that this process would continue to be one that would bring you on earth and would be good for our communities. In Jesus' name, amen.
Invitation. Thank you. You don't have to stay for this whole meeting, but you're welcome to if you would like. Pastor, you're excused for a good reason. This is the time for our public comment, but right before I do that, talking to our city manager too, I want you to be aware of something. When we get down to item 13, this is to consider approval of the ordinance amending that land use code. And we are almost certainly going to postpone that. We're going to table that until January. Now, if you've come to speak at the public meeting today, we're happy to have you speak when we get to that, we get to that point. But it'll also, all of this will also be referenced and noticed as another public hearing for this very meeting. So I just want you to be aware, just consideration of your time. So think about that. This is public comment time. And if you would, we'd appreciate you giving your name and where you live. And you have two minutes to express yourselves. And this goes on for a total of 10 minutes. So we're going to turn time over to you now. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak may do so. With that, we will close the public comment time. And we will go to item three, which is to consider approval of minutes of our previous meeting held on November 10th and also on the 17th of 2020. Are there any corrections or additions that any of you have seen? If not, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve those minutes.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we will have council reports. And let's start right over there with you, Richard.
Not a lot to report. Electric metered sales are ahead of last year. Expenses are likely to catch up with those ahead of schedule sales because of the repairs we had over the summer. But everything at the power department otherwise looks great.
Do you think because we're home so much, so many people are home, is that one of the reasons, Richard, that they seem?
I think we had hot weather later than we sometimes do, and that helps. So probably that accounts for a lot of it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Richard. And Millie?
I have nothing to report.
And Kendall?
Nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Please, Chris.
Mayor, since we met last, we dedicated the Bountiful Veterans Park on the November 11th. It was a great event. We were very impressed with those that showed up. We had an individual drive all the way from Macon, Georgia, because an individual in Bountiful that was a veteran was his friend and had passed away. And he wanted to come here to honor him.
That's impressive.
And we have many stories we could tell, but we want to thank the city especially for their cooperation in helping us move forward with this park. As you all are aware, the land for the park was built on is Bountiful City property. And that was a great opportunity for us to be able to expand this and use that piece of property. So we want to thank the city again for giving us that opportunity to Bountiful, build the Bountiful Veterans Park in Bountiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Your group did amazing things. Kate?
Thank you. I wanted to recognize a great volunteer project that happened in our city on Saturday, November 21st with the Trails Committee. It was a project that was organized to start on the North Canyon single track downhill trail. It was cold. It was really cold. But we had 158 volunteers show up.
Wow.
We had, we had high school mountain bike teams from our three high schools here in Bountiful, but also from Davis High and Farmington High come. We had an Eagle Scout project that provided volunteers and then many others of residents throughout the city that are excited about hiking, excited about biking, and excited about our, working on our Trails Master Plan. And we had a couple of city employees who also gave up their Saturday to lead that effort and to help make sure that we were using the right process and the right alignment. You know, so Francisco gave up a Saturday. Brock gave up a Saturday. Brock worked until we were out of water and then well past that, because I was helping hand out water. Curtis Poole was also there. It was a fabulous project. And I got to tell you, the high school kids, you know, the adults started asking for ibuprofen. The high school kids were just excited to get their bikes and go try what they'd built. And I can almost think of no better civics lesson for some of these high school kids than to, you know, work on a project in their hometown and then get to use it and play on it. And I think that was, it was a really, despite it being freezing, it was a heartwarming project.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. The youth council?
The youth council will be at our next first Tuesday meeting. We've kind of cut a hold on things with the restrictions, but we have our holiday activity. We're going to actually be at the Ice Ribbon. We're going to do an activity there for their party. And then they are planning to volunteer at the RJ Ranglers event, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you. By the way, if you haven't been to the Ice Ribbon, any of you on your way home, wherever you're going, go over there to where the new, the new Bountiful Town Square is. And it's lit up beautiful for Christmas. So you'll enjoy it. We will consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid November 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd, 2020. And we'll also include the October 2020 financial report. Is there any?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
On expenditures paid November 2nd, just a little bit lower than halfway, we have concrete repairs for $51,000. I was just curious, are these concrete repairs related to the windstorms and the work we were going to do to fix sidewalks and curb and gutters lifted by trees? Or was this part of other concrete repairs? And we can expect to see a secondary concrete bill later for the windstorm repairs?
It's the same contractor that's providing already contracted services such as, you know, the regular sidewalk replacement program or driveway match program and things like that. And so I believe with the October, and I'm guessing here for the most part, we, it's not broken out, but I know that they were beginning repairs then and are continuing to see repairs. So over, we will see bills and they'll be separated out so that we can request reimbursement for FEMA for those that are related to wind. Now, whether or not FEMA reimburses them is different, but, but I think the majority of this is just finishing up the scheduled work for the season. Is that accurate?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There are no others. I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approved the expenditures from those four dates and also the October financials.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Millie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we're going to turn over a little special spotlight now, and we'll let Kendall handle that.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I am honored tonight to talk to all of you about Betty Louise White. And Betty, for those of you who don't know, she has been the owner and operator of the White House Clothing Store on Main Street in Bountiful since 1967. Is that correct?
Correct.
1967. She's here with us tonight, and I talked to her sons. She's 95 years old, still dancing with the dancing grannies. Is that right? Correct me if I'm wrong. They can't dance due to COVID. But if it wasn't COVID, you would be dancing, right? So she, she's known for her integrity and honesty. My mother-in-law, when I was first elected, she said, we need to get you some nice city council women clothing. So let's go to the White House. So Shawnee Harris, she, she said, this is where you go for nice clothes in Bountiful. Her husband Lyman worked with her as a clothing salesman, and they worked together until he passed away in 1991. They had stores in Logan, American Fork, Leighton, Ogden, and Bountiful. And at the time when the White House opened, there weren't too many stores around. But the big stores offered kind of trendy and short styles. And so they were known for their more conservative and more traditional, classy styles. And so Betty, we are just so pleased to honor you and thank you for doing business in Bountiful for all these many years. Will you join with me in thanking Betty?
Yes.
She said it's been a great pleasure to work in this community for all these years. Is there anything else she'd like to say?
No, we can't change quite a lot. Well, the last four of my years, I think I've been kind of active, busy, sure.
Well, Betty, to be doing business for all these years in Bountiful, thank you so much and for all you've given to the community. It's been quite a good, quite a pleasure. Thank you.
Yep, thank you again. Thank you, Kendall. And thank you very much. We have an opportunity now to introduce to you our new South Davis Fire District Chief. If you'd come up, please. Dane, Chief Dane now is, is now our new chief. And we're so excited about having Dane. Dane, you can tell him how long you've been here and, and just say a few words. He's been the deputy chief now for how many years? Seven?
No, Mayor, I've been deputy chief for nine.
For nine. Thank you. But with the other chief previously, it must have been maybe, was that for a couple years?
Yep. So I was appointed the deputy chief in 2011 with Jim Rampton as fire chief. And then Jim Rampton retired and Chief Bassett became the fire chief. Chief Bassett and I were deputy chiefs together. And then he became the fire chief. And so I've been his deputy chief, number two, for seven years. So it's, first, it's an honor. I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you. I know some of you know me. We've, I've introduced you, I've been introduced to you several times. And if Chief Ross was here, you'd say that I was the guy that stunk up the EOC during the gun range fire. I smelled like smoke being on the thing. So I hold that, he holds that over me still to this day. So, but I appreciate the opportunity to come in and invite. This is the third of five different city councils, and it is a pleasure to be in person. The last two I've done by Zoom and obviously in what I consider my house, my second house. So it's great, and I appreciate the opportunity. As Mayor Lewis says, I've been with South Davis. I started with South Davis Fire District in 1993. So I've been doing this for 27 years. I started as a college student to sleep in the fire stations at night so we could respond. They didn't have anybody during the nighttime. And so we got free room to sleep in the fire stations when I was a college student. That room included just a bed with a partition between me and the other firefighters. But growing up in Bountiful, I was a Bountiful High graduate, the Bountiful football team now, as we were talking about. So that, that's where I graduated from. I, you know, I still live, I live in North Salt Lake to this day. So it's a pleasure to be the fire chief of a community that I've loved for a long time. So this is an opportunity that I wasn't expecting. Chief Bassett, when he told me he was retiring, I was talking, my jaw is still in that office on the floor. I just never thought that he would retire, or at least before I did. So this opportunity came to a surprise to me, but it's been a great opportunity. And I've loved this department. And we have a great department. And I hope that you're, you know, I plan on taking it into the future and keeping the service that you've expected. And we'll, we'll continue that. So it's an opportunity that I'm thrilled to have and I appreciate it. So.
Thank you, Chief. So Chief, before you sit down, I just, being a member of the board, of the fire board and the chair this year, we are just thrilled to have Chief Stone with all your skills and, and with all of your background to be here. I know Chief Bassett said that, he said the only thing that disturbed him about Chief Stone was that no matter where he went, he knew everybody. So Chief Bassett didn't know everybody, but he certainly claimed because you've been here so long, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty well-known.
He, obviously Chief Bassett came from Colorado. And I told him that. I said, you know, I'm sure if we were in Colorado, you'd know people. And he's like, no, that's not the case. But it is, it is nice growing up in Davis County and staying here. And I, you know, you do know a lot of people. And so that's something that he did routinely tease me about. But I think it bugged him, you know, he's like, what are you, the mayor? Never do that. So.
Well, Chief, welcome, welcome to your new job. And, and please, again, say thanks to all of those who work with you, particularly Dave, and all that he's, he's your right-hand person. And, and all the things, I mean, we've had some really close disasters in our community over the years, and they haven't been disasters because of our fire department and, and the other agencies that work with you. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that very much. And please reach out to me. I would love to bring my executive staff, Chief Powers, and then I just recently appointed another person, Greg Stewart, as my other deputy chief. And when we have time, when we get those guys all settled in, bring them in for them and let you, inter, introduce those to you, so you know them. So, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thanks for letting us use your home.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's nice. So it feels, like I said, it feels better to come in person and talk instead of doing so.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Going to turn the next item over to our city engineer, Lloyd Chaney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd invite Craig and Charles to come on up for a minute. And while they're coming up, I would just casually admit to you that over the last couple of years, being a city engineer, I, I've known that a day was coming in two departments in our city. And, and the closer that day got to reality, the more I understood why Paul Roman left. As you, as you're well aware, with the retirement of Gary Blowers and, and now with the changing of the guard at the water department that's going to happen next week with Mark Slagowski's retirement, we have the opportunity to appoint two new directors for those departments. As I started through that process, I was given the great advice by our city manager that that's your decision. And trust me, I felt the weight of that already. Because it's no secret what the street department provides in Bountiful. It's no secret the quality of services that the water department provides in Bountiful. And as we advertise those positions, we interviewed some candidates from outside the city for both of these. And I'll, I'll tell you that it was very reassuring to me to know that within our own departments, not only do we have a culture of training people and getting them in a position to lead and, and guide the activities that are provided by the city, but we have the people in place to do that. And so it's an honor to introduce Charles and Craig to you. And I'll turn some time over to them. It's interesting to note that Charles has been here working for the city in some capacity for about 18 years. Is that right? And Craig, about 14. So these aren't just Johnny come lately. These guys have been around. They know how things work. They understand the expectation of, of what we want to have here in Bountiful. And I want to express to you the same thing that I've expressed to both of them, is that I'm 100% committed to their success. Not only me, but my staff and my department, in a way I consider all of us, the street department and the water department, because we work together. We're a team. It's part of the Public Works philosophy. And I want you to know that I'm committed, I'm deeply committed to that, providing the services that the city deserves. So turn a few minutes over to Charles and Craig, if you'd like to interrogate them. I'm sure that they'd be happy to answer some questions.
I just want to thank you for this opportunity that we're going to continue on with the high level of service that we have for the city, and we'll continue that on as well. We're all about teamwork. Water Department tears up the roads and we put them back together. So we'll continue that on, on and on. Just if you have any questions, drop in anytime. Give me a call. We'll answer any of the questions you have for any. Thank you guys. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
Yeah, so I'm Craig Christensen, like Lloyd had mentioned. Been with the water department for 14 years. It's been an awesome job figuring out the system and learning how to provide quality water. It's been a real joy working with everybody here, all the different departments. Like Charles has also said, building relationships and keeping those great relationships together and just strive to do our best and continue to keep the water flowing. How's that? Any questions?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Last week, on our street, a water line broke. The water crew was there all night. And they made such little noise that I slipped all through it. Didn't hear a thing. The next day, the street department came and patched it. And you know who got all the credit? Me. Every neighbor up and down the street gave me all the credit. Wow. Simon's there. Look what you did. You got it fixed. You did it. And I said, no, it wasn't me. I slipped through the whole thing. The water department came, fixed it. The street company came and put the asphalt back. We have another beautiful street. So thank you again. Thank you.
Oh, of course. That's, you know, that's what we pride ourselves on is making sure we can keep that going and keep the residents of Bountiful happy. So thank you for that.
Thank, thank you. Craig and Charles, I would expect that you have big, that you've had big shoes to fill. And it's really obvious that whoever follows you are going to have big shoes to fill. We're really glad that you're here with us. Thank you for, for being here for Bountiful. And yeah, we're, we're not going to miss a tick. Thanks. Next item, we will turn over to, let's see, over to Alan. Thank you, Alan. I think you have the next couple, Alan, here on our list.
Yes, I do. It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor and Councilman, with a couple of items here tonight. And the first, the first one I have is a solar contract. And this is, we've been working through the years to get additional solar in. We actually have another opportunity to purchase another six megawatts. And to put that in perspective, six megawatts would be like putting 600 rooftop solars on. And the price of this, like I said, I put in here is they didn't want us to put it in writing, but the actual cost for it is 3.2 cents for the power. So it's a good price. The other thing that works with this project and both the other ones is our San Juan coal project is scheduled to go shut off line June of 2022. This project will start coming out at that time, will be fully operational by December of 2022. So both this project and the one that we have done will marry back in as far as providing power into the future. This project is a 25-year contract. So there's, there's no escalation. So for 25 years, we will have the same price that goes along, which will help give us a stable price for power as we go back into the future. This is something that we have discussed with the Power, Power Commission, and it comes with their full recommendation. That would be the staff's recommendation that we approve the resolution 2020-21, which will allow the mayor to sign the resolution approved in the contract to sign this 25-year contract for power from the Steel Solar Company, which is a project that will be up in Box Elder, that's when the steel thing comes up there by the steel plant up there.
What's the total we have now of solar? Is it 11 megawatts with the, with the other project and this one?
Yeah, we would have just around 11 megawatts, which is about all we're going to really want. We won't be pursuing anymore. This gets in here as we have to match it in with our existing resources that we can schedule. That, that's about what we're going to want to have. So we probably will not be looking for any more solar into the future unless our load drastically changes.
And is this cents per kilowatt hour the same for both of them? Do they both come in about 3.2 cents or?
This, this one is a flat price. The other project we have from the Navaho's, it's got a little bit better load factor, which means it will produce a little more power because there's more sun down there. But it starts lower and goes higher. And the average price is just a little bit higher than this one.
Okay.
Any other questions from?
May, may I ask a question? Sorry, it was strange. Alan, between this and our CRSP and others, what, what percentage of our power is what you would consider clean power?
Well, right now, with our CRSP power and our hydro power, we are 42% green power. Now, that doesn't meet the definition of green because our CRSP power is hydro, but it's large hydro. Our hydro plants, because they were built a year too soon, are not classified as green, but they are carbon-free projects. This, as I come back into it, is going to put us a little over 50% in carbon-free power at this point. And then it'll meet the criteria with this will get us up into the, you know, the state's mandate of the 20% by 2020. And you know, like I said, 25% by 2025. We will, we will be into that mandate, the volunteer mandate as we go back into it.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-21.
Second. Good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Alan. Next item.
The next item we have, as we're talking about clean energy, is our Pineview Hydroelectric Project. And one of the things about our hydroelectric projects is they're both controlled by computers, which means we got computer parts and everything that goes along. Which means we got computer parts and everything that goes along. We, we had a failure last. During this last year and we had spare parts, but when we went to go get replacement parts. We found out that they no longer supply and the, they're just not available. The, the compute codes they have aren't available. So what we had to do is we'd run out and we'd look and this is the same type of equipment. It just has their new updated one. The other ones lasted eleven years. Like I say, we have no more parts. So if it should quit working, number one, it would. Potentially not control the water going downstream, but we also would have to shut our hydro plant down for the summer. And as we know, summers where our powers are most expensive and this is when it comes along. So we've got with Acusonic, the company that do, and this is the new electronics that would tie back into the same. Um, equipment that's already mounted in the pipe. So we've got two modules, upstream and downstream module, as well as the labor to have it installed. So it'd be the power commission's staff recommendation that we approved the fifty thousand eight hundred dollars. For the two Acus- Acusonic control modules as well as the installation for our Pine, Pineview Hydro Project.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, any questions from the?
One, if I could.
Please.
We've got new turbines. We've got new control modules. We've got new flow meters. We've pretty much got a new system, right?
Well, this, this is Pineview, so that. Echo is the one that we rebuild all the controls or the, the hydro. We still got to go through the controls on both of them. Like I say, we will be spending over the next number of years a fair amount of money on our hydros. Because the controls for both the hydros are aging, but some. Unfortunately, we'll be back some more talking about hydros into the future.
With all of our investment in refurbishment, that still will not qualify those projects as green.
Our echo project, because we spend enough on that, I believe we're going to be able to make a case of that one will become a green hydro.
Super. Thank you.
Under, sorry, another question for you. Under Representative Ward's proposed legislation, would our older hydro projects become green under? His position. So the current definition is not so much, but if his goal were successful, then we.
Like I say, there's two things we've done. We've had to help spend money on the dam at Echo. And the refurbishing, as we start going to the controls, we're going to put enough investment that we'll be able to turn them green. Or after Councilman Ward's or Representative Ward's. It would make them green also. Cause like I said, the only thing that's why ours are not green was because they were built a year too early.
Thank you. Any other questions? You have any questions?
Mayor would be happy to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Acusonic flow meter controls.
And I'll look for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan. Always appreciate you. And, uh, uh, item twelve, Brock, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Appreciate your time tonight. Uh, bringing before you. Pricing at our cemetery to, um, for urn burial. And the options that we, uh, plan on providing there in terms of urn burials. We've been looking at this for quite some time now, for the last two or three years. As, um, the percentage of urn burials has increased. Uh, in terms of how many are in natural burial or offering, uh, urn burial. We're starting to see that percentage increase. In two thousand eighteen, it was about ten percent. In two thousand nineteen, we saw it jump to fifteen percent of our burials are urn, uh, related. So this year we anticipate seeing that to be about eighteen to nineteen percent. So we're seeing that need increase. And, uh, with your approval. Uh, last year we installed a new columbarium. And that has been installed. I think there's a picture in your packet and if you've looked at that. That's currently installed. Uh, we've had lots of interest. Already in that and have had quite a few phone calls at the cemetery about when that's going to be offered. So this pricing that is before you. Has to do with that specifically. And then as we go forward in developing that piece of property on the northeast corner of our existing cemetery. We plan on doing, um, the healing garden in, in, uh, in and around that, that columbarium. We anticipate adding more over time. We'll see how this goes, but already we're seeing quite a bit of. Interest in, in that. There are some other pictures that you saw there. One other picture talked about. Or showed a boulder that had holes drilled in it. That's another option that has, has become quite popular. As well as you saw the big granite block, uh, laying on the ground. That's also another option, uh, that's out there. Um, that we choose to offer. The pricing that you see covers all three of those different options. As we develop the healing garden. We anticipate other options to be made available and possibly future pricing to, to talk about that. But the pricing that you're seeing set before you is to, is about the columbarium. And the boulders and the granite, uh, the granite block. All three of those are options that we, uh. Could offer here within the next month or so. We have done quite a bit of study as the staff. We have looked at seven other cities, surrounding cities. And we've looked at, uh, four, four other private, uh, mortuaries. And looked at what they offer. Other cities really don't offer anything. So it was hard to compare city-wise, uh, for pricing. You'd have to go to Brigham City or you'd have to go to Provo, uh, to look at what we're trying to offer here. And we're right in, uh, the same neighborhood of pricing that Brigham City has and that Provo has. It's hard to say where we sit with the private industry because they offer. Uh, or they require other services that cause that, that price to be quite high. So we feel as a staff, uh, pretty comfortable with the pricing that you've seen. I hope that you've had a chance to look through all of that. What that means and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions from, you have one, Billy, it looks like? Sure.
Just, and this may have been decided prior to my time on the council, but I know that there's a resident charge and a non-resident. Is there anything for previous residents? Like if someone lived the bulk of their life in Bountiful and then. Was stationed overseas or something like that. Is there, are there any allowances for that?
There are, and we usually treat those, uh, case by case basis. Um, those questions are typically handled through our policies at the cemetery. And again, as they come up case by case, we'll look at those and we'll address those individually. I think the standard, uh, answer is that if you've been gone away for more than six months. Uh, typically you're considered non-resident and that's by state. That's, those, those are state, uh, regulations that we follow there. Because we've had so many of that question. So, good question.
If I may, one exception to that, that we, we have talked about in, in, in implementing is that if you leave Bountiful. To go into assisted care or whether that's with a family member or into a, you know. Then you're still considered a resident. So, you know, if you move out on your own volition, that's one thing, but. So that's kind of an exception we've made.
So if somebody goes to Legacy from here, they're a resident here, they go to Legacy and. In Leighton and they're in the assisted living or the long-term care, they would still be considered, uh, here as a resident.
Or if they move in with a family member for the same reason.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Follow-up question along that same lines. If, if somebody, um, is from Bountiful but is, um, serving in the military. Um. And, and was killed in action, would we grant them and wanted, you know, their family wanted to return them here? Would we grant them the resident status in that case? Is that spelled out in our policy or would that be a case by case?
I think we would, uh, just because of their service and. That would be something that we would do anyway. There was a recent case, uh, where they just recovered of, uh. An individual that was missing in action from Vietnam or Korea. I can't remember which. Uh, so that many years ago, we brought him home and, and had a burial there and, and awful honors. So we treated him just like a resident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I ask Brock a question? I, just from my own, uh, understanding. On the bottom picture, we have the granite. Now, does that mean that the urn is under the granite? Is that what we've gotten in the granite? Is the urn inside of granite or just in ground?
Yeah, so typically what it is, it's a stainless steel canister that's seven inches in diameter by about twelve inches tall. And that's large enough to either hold a urn or, um. Without sounding disrespectful, uh, a bag that holds the, the ashes. Or typically, if they want to do a homemade urn, we typically give them those dimensions and they have to conform to that size. But it's sealable, it's waterproof and it'll go in the ground. And then the granite will sit on top and the granite will act as the headstone. So it'll, the granite will sit right on top of the cylinder.
And then with those that have the holes in the rock. Then does that urn just fit and cemented in there?
Correct. So the same size of cylinder goes inside that hole. So it's watertight. And then it gets a nice bronze twelve by twelve inch plaque. That's mounted to the stone and then sealed so that it's watertight over the hole.
Then does the name, does the name go at the bottom of the rock? How do we identify who's there?
Uh, the bronze plaque that's twelve by twelve. It's all engraved with the name and the date and the, the information that the, the, the individual wants on it.
Okay.
So the plaque acts as the headstone. And they can do that as an individual or we all get rocks large enough that will allow a family or multiple. Uh, in one, in one boulder. So that's become quite popular.
Thank you, Brock. Thanks. Any, any other questions?
It's a weird question. What are the dimensions, Brock? Somebody asked me, it's been probably three weeks ago. I, I didn't know if there was a standard urn.
Uh, there typically is. The urns range anywhere from, well, some, some folks just use a box. Um, and the boxes are ten by ten by maybe six. The urns are typically about six inches in diameter by about eight to nine inches tall. Some have taller, um, but we have to make sure that we instruct them that it can't be larger than eleven inches because the. The spaces in the columbarium are twelve by twelve. So twelve by twelve fits ninety-nine percent of everything.
Interesting. Thank you. There are no further questions. We'll, uh, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Mayor motionably approve the cemetery fee and the charges associated with. Burial, urn burial options.
And a second.
That was second.
Okay, Richard with a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, we are now, uh, to item thirteen. We talked about this just a little bit earlier. I'm going to turn some time over to Francisco to. Kind of get us on the right track here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the proposed manuse co-text amendment regarding accessory structures. And, uh, basically we would like you to continue this item to a future date. I believe that date would be January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in light of some recent. Parameters that we're still currently reviewing and we just simply need more time for that. We did notice this as a public hearing. So we do ask you to, to hold a public hearing. I'm not quite sure how many people from the public are willing to speak on that. But we, we do ask that, um, you move forward with, uh, continuing this item to that meeting and I will be more than happy to answer any other questions that you might have for me. Tonight.
Good, and we will, we will look to do that following, uh, these folks who wish to speak. So with that, we will open, uh, the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to come up and express themselves may do so. I think I would recommend that if someone has said the same thing that you would say, I would, I would recommend that you, uh, be brief when you stand up. Okay, it's now open. Please give your name and where you live.
Mayor, could I just say something as well? Just to reiterate that. Even if this is postponed, it will be noticed and there will be a public hearing in January as well. You're welcome to speak tonight. Or the next meeting or both.
We have a small home and over the years we've wished that we could build on.
Excuse me, could you give me your name and where you live?
Oh, excuse me. I'm Dave Lindsay. I live at four eighty-four East sixteen hundred South in Bountiful. We've wanted to build on. One of our neighbors did build on with a, uh, similar thing. We talked about how come. He had been to the city planning people and got a variance. We went through the process. And, uh, applied. We went to the variance meeting or to the commission meeting. At that point. It was said that, uh, we had a good project. Uh, they felt like we could do it. We weren't getting in anybody's variance. Uh, we weren't causing any problems. It'd be a good project. At that point. Mr. Hickenson proposed that we wouldn't get a variance. But that they would take the legal consideration and clarify that. And that we should look forward to getting action there legally. And then they could just give us the okay to go ahead on the project. That was October of sixteen. Uh, we've been waiting. Every six months we go in and talk to them. They say, hey. You have a good project. But we can't give you the okay. We're waiting for the clarification of the law. Um, I would urge you to allow this because many of my neighbors. Have come to the point where they need this type of help. And they haven't been able to get it. So they have gone ahead with their project on the QT. Uh, we tried to do it legally. We still haven't had anything done. I appreciate the consideration in that regard. Because really, I'm tired of mowing that grass. I'd rather have my grandchildren able to come and stay with me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, uh, get back with you from, uh, from city staff. Anyone else? Please.
My name is Julio Garcia. I live in West Monteflo and he's my client. I'm an architect and, uh, I'm pretty sure you guys have this problem quite often. Especially in, in the, all the areas of the towns. I think the problem boils down to affordability. I mean, it's not easy to just move to another home when we need more room. And especially in these times, uh, when we cannot buy a new home. So we prefer to expand our horizons within our property. And, uh, these days it's just impossible to buy a new property. So folks needs to be able to fix and expand the existing ones. The other factor or big factor is safety. As we know, many neighbors, knowing that it, getting the permit is pretty hard, they just build it. They don't say anything. They build it and that, that happens quite often. And the issue is that those guys may not be safe in those buildings that are, didn't go through the engineering and planning and all the departments that they have. So, uh, I just expose that as a. Uh, the main points in this case and in many other cases that for sure you guys have before. I think the ordinances, uh, need to be a little more flexible. Uh, responding to the economic pressure and economic times and, I mean, new challenges that we have. Uh, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
So I'll just make mine quick. I'm Alex Densley. Uh, my house is actually used in your guys' packet example. Mine is one of the ones that under this, uh, wonderful thing became an illegal house. It is for your guys' reference, page eighty-two. On your guys' section. Um, just as you guys go through this process, I just wanted to say thank you for actually going through this to bring my house like back into compliance. Because obviously I, I read through the whole packet on how we have this judgment thing and how it's, uh, kind of popped out of spec now. Um, the only two cents I just wanted to put in as, uh, I want. Um, the only two cents I just wanted to put in as, uh, I wanted one, thank the city and/or the planning commission. I actually received a phone call from them seeking some inputs and guidance from that. So I just wanted to make that publicly known. Like, it's not you guys just like in some back corner, you know, coming up with something. So I just wanted to say thank you to the bad aspect of it. And I also just wanted to, to point out, uh, I've had two homes here in Bountiful. This is my second one. My first home also fell into a non-compliance. I went back, looked at Google Earth, right? Like it doesn't follow compliance either. But then as we go forward with this code, um, that I would just like to put out there that I, hopefully we can be very, uh, for lack of a better term, very liberal with the code on it as far as allowing people to build these structures. Because I look at my old neighborhood, I was a very small lot. I was one of the bare minimum sixty-five foot wide, you know, half block deep uh, properties. Whereas my current property, as you can see in this one with the red lines, it's giant pie shape. Um, it's a reverse pie, so that the street, I'm very winding, it narrows into the backyard. Where if I wanted to do some type of a structure, I would need mine to be able to come forward, possibly ahead of that roof line a little bit potentially, just because of your setbacks and variances, because I can't go farther back because I run into the same issue, setbacks, variances, things of that nature, if that house was ever to be expanded upon or, or a larger unit being put on. So just as we go forward, I just hope that you continue to get the public input, especially from those that, uh, have had, you know, some problems or issues with it. My, I've had fun talking with my neighbors in both my old neighborhood that become non-conforming, you know, hey, our properties are old, they're built in the thirties, we need some help here. As well as mine, that's currently as listed on that page, built in fifty-eight. Hey, my property's kind of funky. In order to build it, would need some, some help on things left or right if it was to go in the future. So just wanted to say thank you for actually having a public meeting and just wanted again, thank you for you guys actually reaching out from the planning commission, trying to get some feedback.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will close the public meeting. And, uh, we will look forward to hearing from any of you a- again, or if you wanted to speak. And you didn't speak today because you know that on the twelfth of January, we will hold a noticed public meeting. Uh, and we will do a public hearing on that, uh, date as well. And we welcome you to come back and speak, uh, to your positions. Thank you. Uh, we will, uh,
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, we need to make a
Make it a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we continue this item to the next meeting.
Good. Thank you, Millie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? That passes. Thank you. That will be extended. Again, Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. And this next item is an amendment to the land use code to permit temporary sales offices in trailers located in the residential zones. This is an applicant-initiated, uh, application, uh, submitted by Sean Four with Brighton Homes. I do believe that Sean is here. There he is in the back. And, um, the reason that this application was submitted, but submitted by Brighton Homes was because our code expressly prohibits uh, temporary sales trailers within residential homes. The actual language is found on page ninety of our, um, of the packet of the staff report where temporary cells are indeed allowed, say in a model home, in a subdivision or an apartment, but not within a temporary sales off, uh, trailer. Uh, it, it's not allowed in an actual trailer. The planning commission did get to review this item at last week's uh, planning commission meeting and, um, that they voted with a four-three negative recommendation not to make the change. The, um, Commissioner Barton indicated it correctly where they didn't find compelling, uh, reasons or evidence for the actual amendment. And, and that was the original recommendation that, uh, staff provided to that planning commission not to make the change. The proposal, as indicated by the applicant here, is, uh, in the middle of page ninety, right in the middle of the page, it would say temporary sales offices incidental to a specific residential project may be located on the site of such project. The trailer may remain for the duration of the project and shall be removed within thirty days after substantial completion of the project. Uh, the same recommendation that the planning commission is what we share with you is that we don't find any uh, compelling reason or evidence to change that actual policy that took place, I believe in nineteen ninety-three, where the city, uh, expressly, um, decided to prohibit these types of uses. This is a land use code text amendment, so we do need you to hold a public hearing as we've noticed it for such, and I'll be more than happy to, uh, answer any questions that you might have for me at this time.
From the council to, to Mr. Sorga. Okay. Francisco, then we'll, uh, we will open this to a public hearing. And, uh, again, I think all of you heard my request last time, so we'll just invite you to, to come again, give your name and your address and anyone wishing to speak may come up now. Okay, I will close the public hearing.
One, one more thing, uh, during these, um, um, applicant-initiated applications, I think it's worth giving the applicant, uh, a few, a minute uh, to discuss their proposal as well, but it's
Thank you.
It's completely up to you.
Thank you. Be happy to have you come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I appreciate it. Um, I, I enjoy working with Bountiful City. As I, as I mentioned last time, the main reason we're going through the effort of, of trying to get this changed is because we really like Bountiful City. We build it here a lot and, uh, and we plan on building here a lot going forward. So um, with that, with that said, um, I, I did the same research that Francisco and, uh, and Curtis did, and I, and I found the same thing, that there was for the most part, there was no mention of sales trailers in, uh, most of the surrounding city's code, with the exception of Farmington, which, um, like Bountiful City denies it in their code. Um, other cities that we, so we've had this trailer for, um, a couple of years now, and we've been able to use it in North Salt Lake and in, uh, and in Layton and in, uh, what's the other one? And Centerville. Um, along with some other places down in Salt Lake County. Um, there was some examples that I gave of, of codes where it was, um, allowed in the code, but they were cities that were down in Salt Lake County, because that's kind of the distance I had to go to find the ones that I was familiar with down there. Um, but just to, to give everyone an idea of, of what we're asking for, uh, the sales trailer is not there to um, take the place of a model home. We just find that we don't get a lot of traction with our sales until we have somebody on site. Um, and a lot of the bigger builders, they have the luxury of letting their property sit a little bit longer before their sales pick up. Um, smaller builders like Brighton Homes, on the other hand, don't have that luxury. So we, we're just trying to increase our sales early on and keep construction moving faster. It allows us to build faster with banks only allowing us to build a certain number of specs without having buyers lined up. Um, so the, again, the idea is not to replace the, the model home, which is allowed in the zoning. It's, it's to bridge the gap between um, when construction starts and when it actually gets seeable on the first building. Um, in, in the correspondence I had with, uh, with Curtis leading up to this, um, he, he asked me the question of how it benefits the city and its residents to to make this, uh, change to the code and um, the best thing I could come up with is that it, uh, does speed up our process for, for the reasons that I've stated already. Allowing us to get more sales. And in the same, at the same token that, um, I feel like there should be a, a good reason to, to prohibit something as incidental as a sales trailer on, on properties and that I didn't feel like there was a, a good reason to prohibit them necessarily either. Um, and so with that, I just, uh, asked that you guys, uh, consider, consider this and it, and if if the language that I've proposed is perhaps too broad, which was kind of some of the argument in the planning commission, uh, I asked that maybe we consider a conditional use permit for it. Perhaps it has a timeframe of six months. I've seen some cities that have done it, do it that way where gives the city a little bit more control over the situation if they do want to, um, make sure that you're not getting something unsightly there that's going to sit there for a really long time and gives the city a little bit more control. So, um, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Francisco, could you, could you give the council some uh, maybe background or reasons why this was, uh, put in the code as it is right now, not to have trailers on the on the property?
Well, I could, I could attempt to do that. I think I was hanging out at Bountiful Junior at the time. When that, when that, when that decision took place in ninety-three. But, uh, what I could deduce from, from what was happening at the time, it was just that it was most likely that, um, uh, temporary sales office in trailers weren't attractive. Uh, and they detracted from the property. Um, another reason, and we outlined it in the staff report, uh, is that uh, most likely it would go somewhere where, uh, landscaping requirement would be required. And, uh, most sites, um, that we're currently looking at for residential development are right at that minimum requirement of fifteen percent for landscaping. So we, we're, we're also concerned that, um, or, or it could have been back in the day that they were concerned of, uh, taking away from other requirements that would look, uh, it, it would like, it would make the site less, it wouldn't comply with the code is what I'm trying to say. Uh, and that's, that's the only thing we could deduce from the nineteen ninety-three policy that took place, and that's when that specific language kicked in.
Gary, do you have any more insight to that?
No, but, but perhaps, um, we could ask Lloyd a, a little bit more, if you don't put you on the spot, Lloyd, about site conditions during construction and development and and storage of equipment. That was a concern we talked about as staff.
I think my department probably has a pretty, pretty good view of what happens during many of these projects. Particularly on, on the projects that are in fashion right now, you know, these small multifamily sites that have ten or twelve units packed into a fairly small site. I think our experience has been in the last couple of years, last three or four years probably, that the sites are so small and the contractors are in such a rush to get their projects completed on the market that they have literally so many tradespeople working that it spills over out into the street. I don't know how on some of these projects you could really accommodate a sales trailer and still build a fourplex or a, you know, series of three or four townhomes together. Most of these sites are fairly compact, fairly small. The other issue we see is that just because of the smallness of the sites, there's parking along the street that's problematic. Uh, particularly if you're building on one of the more, on a higher volume street, a collector's street. Materials get tracked out in the road, becomes a problem to keep it clean, keep the site well cared for. Uh, we do frequently get comments about both of those conditions. Uh, the project that Brighton's currently working on is that one that would probably facilitate a construction trailer? Yeah. That could probably work, but I would, I would look back to past experience and say that that is more the exception than the rule for these small multifamily developments.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I would, uh, turn it back to the, to the council for any clarifications or questions for Francisco in regards to this ordinance.
Could I ask Councilmember Harris to, uh, maybe give us some of the highlights from the planning commission?
Sure, thanks. Um, so discussion was much of what we've just been hearing. Um, I think there's some good points made on, on both sides. Um, and as you saw, the vote in the commission was three to four. So it wasn't like an overwhelming decision that we thought one side was definitely right, one side was definitely wrong. Um, one thing that we talked about a little bit, and unfortunately it was after the meeting, um, but some of the planning commissioners were talking about how they felt like it would be a better fit to be a conditional use permit, um, where it's allowed under certain parameters, partly because th- these requests will be somewhat rare. Um, the opportunities for these requests, just because of the zoning and the way um, the, the land, the available land for these kinds of projects is limited. Um, and so I don't know if the council has an appetite to consider conditional use permit. Um, the planning department said that they would be open to that. It looks like, to me, it looks like if we have some parameters that they um, are allowed as a conditional use and if they are able to, um, you know, use their own parameters that they create so that we do avoid some of the problems that Lloyd was discussing. Um, but I think it's in our, it's, I think it's in our, is city's best interest to um, help, help these developers to sell these units. And in this case, it's a cute tiny home, but in other cases, it may not be. And so if the planning commission, if the planning department is able to set those parameters and if it's a fairly rare process they have to go through, then to me, um, it, I, I like the idea that, um, you know, maybe there wasn't compelling reason to allow it, but I, I agree that likewise, there may not be a compelling reason to just say that it's never allowable. Um, so, but, um, I think, I think one other thing that we talked about in planning commission a little bit was um, Commissioner Spratley brought up the idea that she thought that if there was a conditional you, um, use permit allowed, that perhaps it could be something like the, the trailer would be allowed to be there up until the project was fifty percent complete or you know, some kind of timeline like that, that the planning department could could, um, dictate. Um, I, I don't think there was anything else specific from the planning commission that we haven't discussed, um, aside from those things.
Mayor, could I ask Mr. Chaney a question as well?
Please. Lloyd, would some of or all of those problems that you talked about be mitigated if we had a minimum project size to allow a sales trailer? I mean, if, if we had a certain acreage requirement or unit requirement, footprint requirement? Could that?
It's, it might, it's hard to give you a definite yes or no because, sure, you know, there's a lot of variables involved in that, but uh, certainly a site that has a larger landscaping component or one that can be phased with a very specific phasing of construction could accommodate something like this better than than what we see as typical construction right now. Building setback to setback on all four sides of a building.
Thank you. Thank you. Please.
I have a question on the text for Francisco. Um, the final sentence, we have the trailer may remain for the duration of the project. And then, it shall be removed within thirty days after substantial completion of the project. To me, those seem like they were odd statements that it can stay through the duration. Um, but we've also got substantial completion. So it, it read in a weird way to me that we weren't clear on exactly how long it could stay. I, so I don't know, you could help me understand that last sentence?
Yeah, and perhaps we need to bring, um, Sean back here as that's the text that was, uh, proposed by the applicant. So, so, um, I just wanted to, and before he, he addresses that, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, if the council, this is a legislative item and you could legislate as you see fit in your role. Um, if you're inclined to approve it, uh, I, I think that uh, instead of approving it tonight, we would want to, uh, take further time in my office and my shop to get the language correctly. Uh, it would most likely, uh, it would come through a, a, a conditional use based on the, uh, possible direction that you could provide, uh, to staff tonight. Um, where keep in mind that a conditional use isn't allowed use, where we can impose certain conditions to try to mitigate, uh, negative impacts that are associated with the use. But, but I do believe, uh, council, woman Bratcha, that, um, that text needs to be addressed by the, by the applicant. That's what they're proposing.
So, so I guess then my question would be, so if, if the trailer should remain through the duration of the project, does that mean the entire project or does that mean like one unit of the project is one unit?
Um, the way that, where I got the text actually was from, uh, Bountiful's, uh, commercial code where they talk about construction trailers. Um, so I just copied the text from there and, and fitted into this, uh, sales trailer thing. So, um, yeah, I, it, it talks about through completion of the project, because that's what construction trailer is typically there for. Um, but again, I'm open to a But again, I'm open to a shorter timeframe. Like I said, a lot of cities, they'll do a renewal period of six months. Depending on the project, you may need a longer, you may need a shorter.
Okay, I think my feelings on the issue would be. I have a. A single lot home that's going in in my neighborhood, a few houses down, and it's. I think they've run into some COVID-related construction delays and there's a porta potty and some debris that's that's come into the street. We're excited to have the new neighbors. I would love to, you know, it's an impact to have the construction project going on in your neighborhood, so facilitating, helping that construction project. Complete quickly and getting your new neighbors in so that you can start to build that sense of community is a, I think, a good thing. But there are the negatives that come from having a construction project kind of make your neighborhood. Still. You know, like it's in a kind of a junk stage where you've got trailers, you've got. Contractors leaving pieces of equipment, you've got porta potties and to have a sales trailer. That's also something I would say we need to balance because our city would mostly be these small infill projects, not. Huge swaths of undeveloped farmland, so my two cents would be, I'm not opposed, but maybe something. Something different than what we've exactly got before us that that is fits us a tighter niche.
I I think along the lines of that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think along the lines of that, Kate, is where I feel we we could fall where. You know, we don't go along with this text where it just opens it up to whoever wants to have it there, but. If we're willing to look at a conditional use permit where it's allowed under the parameters that the planning department sets. Then that helps have them keep some control over it, so it's kind of like a compromise where they're allowed, but only under certain situations. So that's where I feel I feel like we should refer it to the planning department and ask them if they're willing to come up with some. Parameters for a conditional use permit, but that's my two cents.
Francisco, I've only been in two or three of these trailers before. That are on onsite, but the the ones that I've been in, they've normally been the construction. Planning area where they have the plans in there and are taking care of it on, and the other half has been. A sales area, so it's been, there's been one trailer and it's been, because you, don't you also have a trailer that you? That you have on site? Do you have one over here? I'm not sure if I've noticed one on Fifth South and. And Orchard.
Yeah, construction trailer?
Yeah.
No, we do not. We don't typically use construction trailers. Bigger commercial projects usually do, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think about that even over at our remodeling of City Hall, I mean, we have.
Yeah, the construction trailers tend to be a lot more unsightly, and sometimes they are used as a dual purpose.
Yeah, that's what I've seen.
We, ours is. As Councilwoman Harris pointed out, it's a tiny home and and we. We try and keep our construction traffic out of it because they tend to track a lot of stuff.
A lot of dirt and everything.
And we try and keep it nice inside. It kind of has finishes like.
Just a comment, that was it.
Yeah, and if I may, or if I could clarify, construction trailers in Bountiful are allowed. The the issue are temporary sales offices in trailers is a specific language that we're looking at. And one more, one last point, if I may, we've been saying that Bountiful's near built out for quite some time and we've. We've been successful at that, obviously, without a temporary sales office in a trailer. So it's it's coming somewhat late as this request is coming in. It would have been ideal to get this going on back in the sixties and seventies. But we've gotten through it just fine without these uses, but again, if you're more inclined to. Make this an allowed use, we would say that, please give us more time from my office to come up with the right language and it would most likely be a conditional use.
Is is there someone in the council that wishes to go that direction? I mean, I can, we can look for a motion to that.
I'm, I would be comfortable with the conditional use permit.
Or or waiting. Waiting to make this decision till later, is that what, is that what we were looking at?
I I could perhaps try a motion.
Try it.
Support for it.
Try it.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we refer this issue to the planning department and ask them to explore. Options for temporary sales offices that involve a conditional use permit. Second.
Thank, any further discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Do we want to give any direction on parameters that should be included in that conditional use? Who want to give any direction other than just? Go for it?
I would think that, I think I think the council member is wise. Off the top of my head, I think maybe the size of the lot, the number of units for the project. Perhaps. Whether the the areas be built in and joins busy streets that will create. Traffic impacts, you know, if you're using the space for a sales office versus. Stationing of supplies, those would be the three that come to mind.
Could I, could I propose that we, because I think it would be very difficult here, it's maybe a long conversation, could we? Could we take those things that we want in there and give, send them in an email to Francisco? Then let him come back with a proposal to us and we'll just refine it from there. Would that be, would that be acceptable?
Sure, the only one I would add to Kate's list is the the timing of the allowable.
The duration.
The allowable time of the.
If we all add our things and give them to Francisco, then you, would you be then able to get back with the council?
Absolutely, I heard size, number of units, traffic, timing and duration, plus an email that you might send my way.
With these very specific things that they have.
And we'll come up with a proper name.
Is that seem reasonable, counsel?
So maybe, is the planning commission involved in this at all?
No, it's now in our, it's in our bail witness now.
It comes back to us.
Yeah, it's in, it's in our bail witness.
Francisco, traffic impact.
Okay.
So that's. So it's good to leave.
That was my very broad motion with that in direct.
Okay, yeah, okay, good. Do we have a second? Millie is the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Francisco was right too quick.
No, I just wanted to to make sure you're comfortable if we came back on the twelfth of January. And I I don't want to renotice this as as. We can simply make that through today as to come back on the twelfth of January with with these parameters, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Whenever is reasonable for you, whatever time you mean.
Well, we just, just let's just make sure that from a council standpoint, we send those things that are. That were suggestions or or counterintuitive to what we're trying to get done, all right?
Francisco, did you use the data on the public record?
For for noticing purposes.
I would like to make an additional motion, Mr. Mayor, that. We bring this item with Francisco's suggested language back for the January twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Great. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we got it covered that time. Excellent. Okay, we we have another item from you, Mr. Storka.
Thank you.
My city planner.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I've got to let you know that even though my boss is going to be upset at this, I have the best job in the city. Based on the broad range of different topics that I covered as we had an RDA item, we did two text amendments. I can, a site plan review, and now we do the twenty twenty Modern Income Housing Plan Report. So I I really appreciate my job and and the broader aspect that that we cover. And this is simply a new requirement that kicked in in twenty nineteen through Senate Bill thirty four. That the city council has to take a quick look, a look at the modern income housing.
Number sixteen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're gonna do, but if you want to start with sixteen, that's just fine, because you can speak for a long time, so I'm gonna take.
We've got the applicant for the Brooks item is here.
Oh, did I, did I? I jumped ahead, I'm so sorry. I have so many items tonight, sorry. My bad, guys, I'm sorry. Yeah, this, I I just barely talked about how we we got to do this, but yeah. This is the Brooks Final Architectural Insightment Review for a mixed-use building. Located at two twenty North Main Street. This mixed-use project consists of twenty residential units. As well as approximately twenty six hundred square feet of non-residential space. I call it non-residential because of the downtown requirement. Of anything facing Main Street has to, cannot be residential, it has to be commercial or office, something other than. The planning commission has looked at this. A lot of times as they had a work session discussion three weeks ago, and then last week, the planning commission forwarded. A positive recommendation for you to review this specific project. As indicated in that in the code, the, anything that has a mixed-use component through a specified traffic study or, I'm sorry, parking study. Is able to to reduce such parking. The the parking study that we received from the traffic engineer indicates that this project, this mixed-use project would. Require thirty eight parking spaces. They are requiring, I'm sorry, proposing thirty four spaces. We're very well pleased with the architecture of this building and we're just going to turn to the main building here. This is building B on page one hundred and sixteen. Of your staff report. This is the corner of Main Street and two hundred north. We're very pleased with the amount of brick that they have placed on this building, and this is going to be the most prominent building right on that corner. If you flip back to page one hundred and fourteen, you'll see building A. This is the building to the north, and then on the on the top of page one seventeen, you'll see the building that. Is aligned on two hundred north. This project has been. It's been in the making for quite some time. I want to say it was one of my very first public hearings that I attended at Planning Commission. And it has changed drastically as they took that original discussion. I don't remember if it was from you or from Planning Commission, they told them, go vertical, go vertical. I think it was originally a one-story with a with a big. Deck up front, and they've gone three stories, and this is what we want in the downtown district. With that said, I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions that that you might have. I apologize. To Justin, I water in the back, I I skipped this project, but we do find that it complies with the code and. This does not, this is not a public hearing. If you need to ask Justin any questions or if you have any questions from me, I'll be more than happy to answer them and. We do recommend that you, as the land use authority for site plan review, approve the Brooks Final Architecture and Site Plan Review for the mixed-use project.
Thank you. Any questions?
Francisco, I was trying to follow the plans. And given that this is not my area of background or expertise. Are the are the units in building A and building B that front Main Street? Are they live, like live-work units? Where the main floor is a is a commercial type space, but is actually connected to the residential units up above, or are they? Entirely separated the commercial space from the residential space on the upper floors?
Yeah, to follow along, you got to go to page one oh four of your packet. And the quick answer is they're not live-work units, they they are separate units. That that they're, this is vertical mixed use. With that, non-residential use, either commercial office on that main level and up on the second and third level. We have the residential components. The the north building, there's three units on top of that north building. And then on the corner, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, total of ten units.
Okay.
Most of them are one-bedroom units.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, that helps. I just was confused about whether they were all.
You you might have gotten confused, is one of the units does have, is a two-story unit. But that's within the second, third floor, not all of them, but only one on, I believe, the north building. Correct, so maybe that's that's what might have thrown you off.
So that one's like the big grand unit, what was the spiral staircase?
I I think it's a smaller one-bedroom, but it does have two floors, correct.
There are no other questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll be happy to make a motion, we grant, what are we granting here?
Site plan review approval.
And architecture?
Yep.
I do want to say as well that I appreciate the landscaping to the east being left as landscaping and not as.
Yeah.
Additional parking.
Yeah, yeah, good.
I think that's a nice nod to the neighborhood, but again, make a motion that we have grants final approval for this project.
And I'll look for a second. Second by Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? No, good, good project. We're glad that you, we're glad that you were here for this. Thanks for coming. Back to you, Francisco.
Next item?
Now, now.
I was, I've been so excited about this, the whole year to for me to present the annual. We've had, we've had, and I'm sorry I jumped the gun just barely, but this is the Modern Income Housing Report. This does not require a motion. But the legislature indicated last year that once a year. We get to send a report to the state and we get to report on the four housing strategies and how we're doing. And the the best portion of the report, I'm going to go back to my staff report. Under the significant impacts where we have identified that sixty percent of our housing stock in both twenty nineteen. And twenty are multifamily residential. I've included a single family and a duplex dwelling, both in the same category, and anything that's three or more goes into the multifamily residential. And the category, and we've approved the last two years up to the date of this report, twenty six accessory dwelling units, which contributes to. Our stock of modern income housing. The reason I selected to report for twenty nineteen and twenty was because prior to that. The reporting requirement was every two years, so we did it in fourteen, sixteen and nineteen. I felt that I needed to report for that, for that last two-year period, and this is something that we get to do about this time on a on a yearly basis. We have submitted the report to the state, the Department of Workforce Administrative. They picked the date of December first, even though it's not found on state code. That's why I dated it as such and submitted it, I posted it on the website. And I'll be more than happy to take any any questions. This does not require a motion, but simply to be shown or reviewed by the city council.
Council, this took a great deal of effort and is very important to the. To our legislature, so. This was really a big effort by Francisco's, I really appreciate it, Francisco, and. You you spent some hours away from work getting all this done.
We did, and like I said before, I I have the best job in the city.
Any, you know, you tell yourself that. Any comments or any, anything from anyone?
Thank you for your work.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go on, Francisco, you have another one, I think. No, 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 it's Gary's.
Thank you, council. You have before you a schedule for the meetings in the upcoming year. This is required by code. This can be changed at any time with notice. But you are required to adopt every year a schedule for that kind of meetings. Happy to answer any questions with what's before you. Otherwise, we'd look for a motion.
I'll look for a motion to approve our schedule for twenty twenty one.
So moved?
I have a quick question for Gary for a second.
Okay, we have a.
Just a procedural question. In your memo, you know, we would not meet. We'd only meet one time in November because of, I'm guessing, the timing of Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Traditionally, we've also only met one time in December. Would that mean that for next year we meet two times in December?
No, we typically make that decision. As December draws closer and see what applications or other things are on the table and if, whether or not it's going to appear with, if, or with Christmas, so. So it doesn't mean we have to, we just usually wait till later in the year to make that decision.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure we weren't cutting ourselves really short at the end.
Thank you.
With that, I'd be happy to second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
And the eyes have it. And eighteen is Lloyd. You're back.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Stay for the whole meeting.
I wouldn't miss it. With your permission, I need to pass out an amended attachment. Apologize for the change in your in your packet. The sewer district is part of the renewal process for. Their critical function for our society is required to obtain approval from each of the cities that participate. In the district. This particular program is the. Pre-treatment. Process where, you know, everyone who. Needs to contribute to the sewage system has to go and apply to this. To this, to the sewer district and this is how, this. Program defines how. The sewer district handles applications, how they evaluate what kind of waste will be. Contributed to the sewage system and what kind of treatment processes. They need to take to, to accommodate. Those wastes. Now, this is particularly aimed at. Commercial and, and industrial users because they produce. May produce products which are a little more difficult to treat. Other than your standard, ordinary, run-of-the-mill residential sewage. Such a great topic.
You didn't want to say that word.
Effluent. It's a great word. It's the word of the day. Um, in, in working our way through this process with the. With the district, uh, we identified. One concern in their resolution and that you'll see on the. On the attachment that I passed out to you that we have crossed through. Uh, the references to. Misdemeanors for, you know. Those who offend the uh, the procedures, the policies of the, of the district. In consultation with our fine legal department to, and the legal department of the. Sewage uh, district. They've agreed that we could adopt their resolution as required by the state. Eliminating that reference and doing it by resolution. It really doesn't change. Any of the nuts and bolts of the process. That the district requires for applicants or for their treatment process. It checks the box. That's required for the completion of their permit. I'd be happy to answer. With some reservation, because I'm not, I'm no, by no means an expert in sewage treatment. Uh, but I'd be happy to answer or attempt to answer any questions you have.
We're good. Why have a uh. Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we. Approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three as amended in the uh. In the amendment in the paper that we just received.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And thank you very much again. Hey, by the way, I apologize. Lloyd at our, at the Ice Ribbon the other day is the only one I really forgot to mention. He's on my list. He was the project manager of the Ice Ribbon. And not only that, he told me later. That the Ice Ribbon was the most fun project he's ever worked on. Now, you have to think. That's, that's really saying something when you think of all the things he's worked on. So anyway, I. So you just have a little crowd that I can tell you today how much we appreciate you and I apologize for missing.
Maybe we need a motion that Lloyd gets a free hour of ice skating for all of his.
We might have to pull him around on one of those plastic sleds, but. Me with you. All right, uh, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight we have resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two in front of you. This is the city council's. Portion of an interlocal agreement with Davis County to be able to have access to five hundred thousand dollars for the. North Canyon Trailhead and Trail Project. We worked with Davis County for a long time to try and identify some funding to make that project. Um, happen and um, they've. Um, allowed us to take advantage of some rap tax, or excuse me, restaurant tax. There's a tourism tax. Don't have the, the staff report in front of me. Tourism tax, county tourism tax money towards this. It is a reimbursement grant. And so um, they will provide up to five hundred thousand dollars for us with the following. Um, we will have the following obligations that we need to complete the project within eighteen months. Um, completion of the project means that the single-track trail is constructed. And that um, the trailhead and parking area is graded and paved. In addition to that, um, we need to contribute no less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the project. And so the, and the estimated project con- cost is actually exceeds seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So tonight we'd be looking for you to um, make a uh, or to. Approve the resolution that's in front of you and uh, then we'll continue on with the project.
Can I ask a question about page one sixty-seven? There are some, maybe what might be. Um, conceptual designs for the parking in the turnaround area. Are those? Are those just kind of um. Uh, drawings to just give us an idea of what's proposed there, or is there any? I- is this something that we think might, it actually might look like one of these two drawings that are here?
No, there's, um, this in fact was uh, an idea generated to just give. The county commission back in May, an idea of what, what we're talking about. It, it's not really based on anything.
On like actual topography or anything?
Uh, it was if the parking had to be close to the road, what would that look like and? But it's not really grounded in anything. It was simple, simply a illustration. That's it.
Okay, that was my only question.
And along those lines, um, the process of determining what the parking lot looks like. Just give us a little um. Guideline of how, what that process looks like.
Can I, can I add to that question, man? That there are significant water issues on the flat part of that property. Including a lot of brading in the, the runoff, the stream. What are we gonna do?
Yeah, those are big, those are big issues and it's one of the reasons that we have. We have um, been talking with neighbors and with the county that we, we've been hesitant to commit to any kind of a design until we do the engineering. And see where the best location is for the parking on that entire parcel. Um, I, I might mention that we have the, the next-door neighbors to our new property here tonight. The sliders are here and. Um, we have, we have met with them and talked with them and, and so. Staff's proposed process at this point would be to. Um, look at the topography and do a design based on a couple of factors. One is. One, of course, would be cost. Um, two is we have to, we have to be careful of the waterways. We have, we have flood. We have uh. But, thank you. Flood control and, and um. What's the other term, Lloyd, and then for game?
Blood plane.
Flood plane issues, yeah, that we have to be careful of. Um, in talking with the sliders, we have a desire to um. Be good neighbors and see if we can't move it as far away from their neighbor, their property as possible. With the recognition that we also have to meet these other issues such as, you know, the flood plain and other things like that, but. That we want as much as possible to accommodate them. And so the idea would be to do the engineering, come up with a, a, a location. We mentioned it to the sliders that we would, you know, before we constructed anything that we would. Show them the design and see if we can't make it as good as possible. Ultimately, I think it needs to come back to the city council that you'd be comfortable with the design. Um, because we, we also would have some bidding to be done at that point, but. It all kind of has to start with the topography.
Yeah. We all, we also in our meeting, uh, visited with them and I assured them. Even though it may have been enhanced, that you, of the council were all really kind too. And uh, and you would want to do the right thing with them as well, so. Um, so the, it, it'll, like we said, um. Sliders, that this process will be done right. We hope that, we, we hope in the end that you're happy and, and that we can all be good neighbors together. Thanks for, thanks for being here. That's a long evening.
Mayor, just for my own curiosity, could I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Probably Lloyd would know the answer to this. Is it, is it legal for us to? Consolidate all those channels into a single channel?
You can work in the Creek bed. It requires a, a permit that's issued from the state. Um, so we would have to prepare an appropriate set of plans and. And outline exactly what our desires are, but. It's not out, out of the realm of possibility to get in to the creek channel and maybe do a little realigning or. You know, adjustment to accommodate some development. I don't know that we want to get carried away up there, but we need to get up there and get a good survey, get locations on. Current conditions and then uh, set some parameters for. For the project, you know, like how, how many parking stalls are we really talking about? Of course, we have some other needs we need to address up there for. Potential restroom or uh, turnaround for city, city vehicles. There's no plow, garbage truck, that kind of stuff.
Staging for public safety, you know, um, those were all priorities that we identified.
Thank you. Lloyd, just before you sit down. You know, we do need to seriously take in consideration street parking. In front of neighbors, neighbors' homes, uh, once the parking lot. Is full. You know, I, I just don't want people parking on those streets up and down in front of their houses. Is there some way we can control that?
Well, we have, we have had a long history of not enforcing parking in front of, creating no parking zones in front of people's houses. You may remember that we recently did away with red curb parking in front of the high schools for the very reason that as soon as you park. Put striping in front of someone's house. All it does is push the parking further away. It doesn't reduce the amount of parking. So we probably, staff would recommend not um, creating any sort of red-curved areas in the neighborhood. Um, and simply enforce the, if parking got in front of a hydrant in front of the driveway.
So we can put multiple hydrants in?
Be a well-hydrated street.
So you had a comment here? Why don't you pull that down just a little bit so we can understand?
Why don't you come up? Do you mind coming up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Steve Slater. I live at thirteen ninety-eight East Canyon Creek Drive. So I'm the guy next to the property and. You guys have been wonderful. You've. Uh, a lot of you have come up. Uh, Millie's coming up tomorrow. We appreciate that, but uh. A couple of questions I had, Lloyd, on the stream. There's one issue that I've explained to some of them. That exists with the stream now with a neighbor. Who lives down the road, that's modified the stream without permits. And, and now it's your property, so I think that's an issue you guys have to deal with. He's built a dam in the stream itself. And there's a collection point there. The collection point existed, but he's modified it extensively and cut out a bunch of materials where. It's going to be a problem for the road going by, so. That's something I visited a little bit with some of the council about, so I think that's an issue you guys need to look seriously at. Uh, Chris, I appreciate your comment about the parking too, because. I've been dealing with this for thirty years and so I've more or less lived with the problem. But I do think if we get a parking lot up above. There should be some consideration shown because it's going to attract more people. A trailhead for sure. I'm a heavy user of outside stuff in the state of Utah and, you know, you look for a trailhead to park and so. There's horse trailers and there's all kinds of trailers. That are, have been in front of my place and it's the reason I have a gate. It's the reason I've. You know, had to replace my driveway a couple of times because before I got the gate, because of the. Impacts to me where the city just allowed the road to end and so. I do ask for some consideration on parking. I don't know what that could be. And Gary has mentioned before that they won't do, you know, parking zones, but I think if I'm going to have parking now. That I've lived with on one side of my house, now I'm going to have it on two sides, so. I just ask for your consideration on that, knowing that you guys own homes yourself, so.
Well, as we said, we'll get that as, as we, as, as things come together. We'll keep you in the loop.
I appreciate that. We appreciate the opportunity to be involved in the planning.
We appreciate you. Thank you for being here. So. I'll look for a motion.
I'd be happy to make the motion. Um. I think, you know, this is a, a great partnership with the county. Um, was great that we were able to have the staff. Work this all out. While we still have things to work out, it's, it's still a, uh, I think a tremendous benefit to us to have secured this piece of land for that. Top part of North Canyon and for our trails, master plan and fire needs and all that stuff, so. With that, I'd be happy to make a resolution, uh, motion that we approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And uh. If there, we're going to have something you have to adjournment, just Gary's got a couple, or do you want to do that now, Gary?
If, if I can beg the council's time for maybe five minutes, um, I, I apologize for not having this on the agenda. It's kind of come up lately. And um, two scheduling items. One is with nearing completion of City Hall. Um, we wanted to know whether or not you were interested in having a, an open house of any kind. If so, we need to, w- we just need to know so we can build it into the schedule. Um, where we have equipment coming in where, and whether or not we do that before staff moves in or after staff moves in. Um, so we're wondering what your thoughts were about an, an open house for the building.
Gary, do we have a date?
Tentatively, um, still mid-January, about fifteenth.
January fifteenth?
Yeah, can, can I just give my opinion here? It's like told him today. I told him today with the fact that we have with City Hall, the new, the new City Hall problem that we had. I, I just feel like with the right narrative, which is, is the correct narrative, is to say. We have. To our residents, we have remodeled City Hall as they have requested. And we did a really good job of it and we want you to come and see it. I think it's just a message of saying. This time going the other way and saying, we have communicated, we have listened. We have built, uh, we have remodeled the new City Hall. Come and see what's, what's been done and. And just like scouts, if we get done, it's they'll come.
Question for you on your, on your vision. Would it be? Like finished, but totally devoid of furniture, or are you thinking?
But no people. I mean, I, I was somewhere right in there. It, to me, because you don't want to, you don't want to take them into people's uh, work areas and stuff. You couldn't do that. I, I don't know, but I just. The timing of it wasn't as clear to me as the fact to do it, but that's just my recommend, that's just my recommendation.
What, so my next question would be then to the staff side. Um, which, which, uh, which makes your lives easier or harder? Totally blank canvas building with no furniture and paperwork yet in it, or? Or does that make it complicate your lives if there's like desks, but you haven't moved? Files and stuff back in you?
I think that the challenge is we don't know that the furniture's all going to come at the same time. And. So devoid of a, devoid of an open house. So the furniture is going to be a limiting factor on how soon we can get in there. Um, is it? If it comes in, yes. I mean.
Is it with the granite?
It's not stuck in China, but, but it has been delayed because of COVID nineteen. Maybe Lloyd can.
South of the border this time.
Oh. So it's a little hard to answer your question. It would be nice if, as the furniture comes, we can be moving. We have a lot of files and things to move in. It depends what your vision is. If it's to go let people walk through the entire building, including the offices or the public spaces or. Whatever, w- we'll accommodate whatever you would like. I'm not sure that there's an easy answer to the question.
Not about how many people we get either, but. I just like the message. I, well, I, I'll tell you what I really like. Is that our cities work really hard on these projects, really hard. And I think that we ought to invite people, the residents, to see where their money's gone and. I, I just think it's a. I think it's a good message. Is that a good message? All right, I got one, but I got three. Thank you. But I know, I just, uh, that's all. I, I, the timing of it. I'm not sure that the, that the staff is that excited about doing any of it. They've had so much to do. And so many things. I'd want it to be more simple than complex. But I, that, that's just my thought. Anybody else?
So, um, what do you envision if you, if we had some sort of an open house, some evening or something like that? Where people could walk through, like what? What, what seems to make sense to you in your mind when you think about it?
Partial completion. I think it's going to be hard to have people walk through. Think it's going to be hard to schedule a time when all of the furniture is there. We're also going to have decorations and things are going to have to come in later. So I, I think it makes, and I'm going to defer to Lloyd on this though, but to me it makes more sense that. So I think it makes, and I'm going to defer to Lloyd on this though, but to me, it makes more sense that it. That we just explained, we're we're nearing completion and let people walk through it as opposed to saying, here's the complete project. With all the furniture in place. Lloyd, what are your, what's your impression of the the optimal time, knowing? What's supposed to be coming and when?
Well, the the latest date on the calendar that we have right now is delivery of the cubicle panels. Now, we don't have a lot of cubicles on the main floor, but we do have some in. Planning and engineering and on the utility and finance side. Those are not anticipated to be delivered until January eighteenth. We are expecting. Other furnishings to be delivered earlier in the month. But it's not all going to show up at the same time. That is a blessing and a curse. Can can we pull something off? Yeah, I think we we can, but. I'm expecting more information this week about furniture delivery and and install. The the comment that I made last week in our owner contractor architect meeting. When they said, well, these panels will be here on January eighteenth. I said, well, that's great. As long as they can be installed by the nineteenth. And I think they're, they get the hint that they've got to wrap things up. We we need to be in the building by the end of January. Regardless. We do need a little bit of time probably to move in and. You know, empty some boxes and we can, we can always straighten up our desks and our work areas in preparation for a. For the public to come through at any time. I think it'd be wise to hold off a little bit and let us let the dust settle for a moment. Let us get some things in place. And then bring bring people in.
That's actually what I exactly I was just going to say, could we hold up until maybe February or March to simply lock? You know, some offices and have it just be a quick, be a quick walkthrough. Not a quick walkthrough, but you know, between hours of the open houses from two to five Friday afternoon or on Saturday.
There are a lot of offices, there's a lot of desk space and things that aren't in offices that are just in open areas. That are behind locked doors. For example, Shauna's desk. Where.
Do we get people, you know, kind of monitoring?
I think probably most of the council would be willing to volunteer to come and keep their eyes on things. Probably even spouses. I just, my request would be that. Our private offices don't get shown and your private bathroom doesn't get shown.
It's behind a secret panel.
I was wondering if if it would be easier for you guys if it was. Prior to moving in, because then it would be like one thing at a time, right? Like the public goes in and then. Next week you guys move in or something like that, but maybe that's not true. Maybe that wouldn't be easier.
Well, what would you want to see the most if you went over? You know, what are you wanting to see the most? I want to see the chamber. I want to see what it looks like where that we have those big windows. I mean, there's a couple of things that I think. Are the most interesting.
I'm just afraid it will look messy once the employees start to move in. It's going to take a while and it will not look. It won't look clean in that sense. And it might be, I think it might be better if we're going to do this to do it before the employees move in. Even though it it won't look lived in at all. I think I think it would be easier.
I think I think I tend to agree, having, you know, from moving into homes and things like that. Once you start in the chaos of unpacking your boxes and figuring out where things are going to live forever, that process goes on for. Quite a while. And so showing it to them, even though it won't have desks or anything like that, but I think the mayor is right that. The the people deserve to see it's it's their, it's it's their house in our city. They have to see what what their tax dollars have done to refresh it and make it something we can use going forward. I think that maybe there's some key things we open up to show people. I think the council chamber would be. One of those. I think the other cool part that is very much about the community is the new flex spaces in the basement that are available. For different types of community events. And they they've never kind of known or seen those. And so if I were, if I were suggesting, I'd say it's one night. Only, one night only special. It's before the staff goes in. And it's it's focused on maybe those two areas, not, you know, in and out of every individual office on the perimeter.
But I think it'd be easy to get them in every part of the building. I just think it'll look a lot nicer before we start moving our boxes.
Yes, Clint.
I was just going to say that building is set up really nicely with a lot of glass to where you can actually see a lot of things. Without actually going in. What I mean is you can go into the the upper floor, go to the right, you can see the treasury, you can, you can see into the city manager's area. Where my offices, Gary's offices, you can look back into the treasury, you can see all that, you can. The council chambers is open. You can go over to the engineering and planning side and see the same thing. You can see the conference rooms, you can see that area. Without going into the offices, then you can go downstairs and you can pretty much do the loop downstairs and see all of those spaces Kate was just talking about. And then you don't go to any of the offices.
I really, I really like that. I, you know, the question I have is this. Has the have the residents of Banafol ever felt connected? Or bought into a city hall or feel like they're owners of the city hall? Have they ever felt like they? There was a connection, at least not while I, that I can remember. And I think that's one of the difficult things we had with a new city hall was no connection to. Our current city hall. So I think this gives us an opportunity to. To and and with the with the park next door, the veterans park. My gosh, that that with the landscaping done with the same landscaper. Rob Vandergrift doing both of the, it's, it it can really look, it 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 can be pretty impressive, I think. To bring people down. So that that's just been my thought. Or maybe both. I think that's a really good idea because what happens is we often just get a few people to some of those kinds of things. But I I think we want to get people there. I want to try.
So ma- mayor, I I really think we should do it in the spring. Because rather going in in February and there's snow and there's sleet and there's ice on our shoes and. If we could do it in the spring and what Clint said, those areas where staff works is open through the glass, they can see it. But then they can see downstairs what we have there and they can see the chamber. And we'll have the flowers outside. It'll be planted, look good. And we just have those areas where staff is well off. Clint said you can see in there. And there's nothing wrong with having your desk cleaned off that night. So it looks like you're organized. And then have it in the spring.
But I, you know what? I, just whatever you got, whatever the council feels.
I got a two for idea that combines your idea and Chris's idea. So I I can see that Chris is right that, you know, winter and tracking snow and salt into our brand new carpet flooring might not be awesome. What if we come up with a Facebook Live or a Zoom Live event? Or have a virtual tour before furniture goes in? You know, perhaps it's something that you're leading and walking the, you know, the camera around to see the different spaces. We can always. Help with some staff or the council to explain some of the cool features. We can be stationed in different rooms as you. Do this event to unveil it in this, in, you know, in January when it seems. Like it's it's open, so it's a sneak peek preview. And then once they're settled in the, we're not as worried about people tracking salt and flesh and it could be.
These are good idea. I think these are good ideas. I maybe what we could do, you have the capital all comfortable. We've, we've said some things to the to the staff. Would you like to ask Angela to to maybe take some of these ideas and maybe give us a date sometime that you think would be? A good i- a good idea? Have we given you enough to say this is what we? I think we all want something, just put it together. I think I think the idea of. Doing two different things is inviting people down, but also doing it virtually would be awesome. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just a little not quite sure if you're talking about virtual only in in the winter. So.
No, I think we could do the virtual as soon as it's really was considerably done.
Right, which is which is winter. I mean, I mean, that's Jan- virtual would be January.
Right.
And then in person in the spring.
Really probably March, I I would think, but that'd be my, that'd be my guess. Your other item?
Yeah, happy to do that. The other item is just a question about the the council retreat, you know, which we have. Tentatively scheduled for the fourteenth and fifteenth of January, but. Just concerned about whether or not we really ought to, we really ought to hold one. Doesn't seem to me there's a lot of value in doing it via Zoom. I think being in person is where the value lies. And we're concerned about finding a space where we can be accommodated safely with that many people. We don't know what's going to happen between now and after Christmas for a few, for a few weeks, but really finding, finding a space and having that many people together is. Kind of a challenge. And so just wanted to know the council's thoughts. I mean, we can, we can work towards whatever. Another thought is that we hold it a little bit later in the year. When we, you know, when we can maybe find better space, we have a better handle on what's happening with vaccines. It's just a continuation of the weirdness of this year and. If we didn't hold it, I think there's some of those larger ticket items that we could, we could do through work sessions. We just want to do what you guys want to do, being sensitive to the current climate. And so. This may not be a conversation that we can completely have tonight, but I wanted to put it out there that it's on, it's on our mind to staff. We want to do what you want to do.
I think that if we can have it, people feel comfortable having it. I think it's valuable. If we're concerned about COVID. Then maybe we even just limit who attends, like maybe it's just. Like are the council and a few key staff people or. Maybe it's one day instead of two, or maybe it's, you know, I don't know. I I think it's valuable. To do it.
I'd I'd really like to hold it. I think we can do away with the dinner out. Show a little caution there maybe, but I think it's, I think it's worth holding and. My recommendation would be to hold it and not virtually because I won't go to that.
Yeah, I agree with Richard. Yes, I think it's important that we hold it. Is it possible to go a little deeper into the year?
Sure.
What about, what about? A mini retreat in January so that we can. Perhaps do, you know, half of the departments or something like that. So our numbers aren't quite as large in case we. It would sure be a bummer if we ended up quarantining all of the senior city staff and mayor and. So what if we, what if we staggered half so that we could do a, you know, more, maybe more of a half day event? Cut out any, you know, meal time, so we have to take off our masks and then do a second. Half. Later in the year when when maybe some of us have managed to work our way to the top of the vaccine line. Some of us will still be at the bottom.
We have it here. Is that a possibility if we if we were smaller in numbers and we didn't have food and all of those things broken up a little bit?
Yeah, I think there, I think there are a lot of options. You know, and and then maybe that's a good way to do it is, for example, maybe we could take, do a half day. And, you know, in January is scheduled where we, and this was the mayor's idea tonight. You see, and I talked about it before the meeting where we talk about. Priorities, you know, what what we all see and what you see as priorities for the year. And and we kind of give ourselves a head start on what the big issues are that are coming up that you're interested in and that staff sees. And then we could come, I mean, there's just one suggestion and then we could come back in. You know, March or April and do a little bit longer, deeper dive on some of those big issues. Whatever we want to do, but it sounds like there's consensus. We want to do something.
I especially think it would be helpful since we've been so disjointed this year in a lot of ways. From staff and just, I think it'd be very beneficial to just come together and kind of reset and set the tone for twenty twenty one.
Good. And and we heard loud and clear, I mean, I think there are ways with staff that we can stagger who comes in when. We've even talked about staff participating virtually until it's their turn to come and watching, you know, the, if we want to do something like that. But I think we're very flexible with whatever we can do to meet your needs.
So Gary, could we do like a half a day in this room?
We really need to bring the fire department something after closing for all to use in their room.
Oh, that's not the fun. Or someplace, we could find a location that fits enough of us, even if it's not here, but. I mean, it has enough room for us to to be comfortable.
It's a great spot.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's, let's, we'll go ahead and plan then on the. If you want to do a half day, would you rather have it be Thursday or Friday of that week?
I prefer Thursday.
Okay. Great. So we'll plan on half day Thursday and I'll be back with you on topics and in the meantime, if you can be thinking about topics either for that. Day or for the more robust version, a couple of months later, just let me know. We have, we also.
Mister optimism over there.
Sorry, would you go morning?
Oh, yeah, probably morning is morning. Okay.
Just a reminder, the latest from the CDC is that even though these vaccines create antibodies. There's no proof yet that they prevent you from getting coronavirus or transmitting coronavirus. So. Keep that in mind in your two month timeline.
Look, don't put these in my head. I already saw I am legend. I already saw contagion. I've already had that in my head. I don't need anything more.
Even if you get it, ninety nine point nine six percent. No worries.
Well, all I know is I I did take the app where it tells you where you would be in line and and I'm like way at the end. So. You know, I'll still be coming to the retreat in a hazmat suit in March and probably July because that's where the app said I fit. Unless, unless we declare ourselves essential.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. That's it.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback. Yep. So moved.
No, I was explaining the date.